Let me know. You ready? All right. Good evening to everyone. And welcome to the Town of Fairmont Heights Mayor and Town Council Town Meeting for for the month. Will you please mute yourselves? Whoever's on the line, please mute yourselves. We're just beginning the meeting. It is now seven thirty-five. Welcome to the Town of Fairmont Heights Mayor and Town Council Meeting, Town Meeting for the month of October. The date is October the twentieth, the year twenty twenty-one. Want to say welcome to everyone, to those people in the room, and to those people that are on the line, to council members, to staff, and to everyone here. Thank you all for your participation this evening. And praises, all praises be to God. We're going to start off this morning with a moment, I mean this evening, please excuse me, my time is all, I've been running all day, but that's all well and good. But we're going to start off this evening with a moment of silence. And from there, I will read an excerpt from General Colin Powell in his honor, so that his service will always be remembered. May we have a moment of silence? Thank you all very much. And this is in honor of General Colin Powell, The Thirteen Rules of Life. It ain't as bad as you think. It will look better in the morning. Number two, get mad, then get over it. Number three, avoid having your ego so close to your position, that when your position falls, your ego goes with it. Number four, it can be done. Number five, be careful what you choose. Number six, don't let adverse facts stand in the way of a good decision. Number seven, you can't make someone else's choices. Number eight, check small things. Number nine, share credit. Number ten, remain calm and be kind. Number eleven, have a vision. Number twelve, don't take counsel of your fears or naysayers. Number thirteen, perpetual optimism is a force multiplier. In General Colin Powell's honor, that was read this evening. May he rest with the ancestors. I'm going to continue down the agenda, and our next agenda item is our roll call. Mrs. Tucker, would you please call the roll? President?
Councilmember Waiters.
Present.
Councilmember Uppity Doolwater.
Present.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Datsin.
Present.
Thank you, all members are present. At this time, I would like for everyone to join me as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, you may be seated. We have several sets of minutes that need approving. I think in work session, we talked about our minutes for the September fourteenth work session twenty twenty-one, and the September fifteenth town meeting. Did everyone have the opportunity to review and get your minutes, so that we can get those approved? And then we have one other addition, which was the May nineteenth twenty twenty-one meeting that needs approval. Did you all receive those also? Which one did you, didn't you receive?
I had September fifteenth, but I don't have the one from there.
Okay, the May went out, I think it went out day before yesterday, because Ms. Tucker was, what day did you send that out, Ms. Tucker, the May, May nineteenth? Okay, what about everyone else? Has everyone else already reviewed?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you reviewed?
Yes ma'am, I have reviewed, but I have comments, of course. And my comment is that, not to disapprove of the minutes, but in my review of the minutes, I did see several things that were pending that are not, have not carried over to Karen, and I'll be willing to discuss that, pinpoint them. I'm sorry, I was, because I was talking to the mayor, I'm sorry. I was saying that I have reviewed the minutes, and there were several things that I saw that were carry-ons, that should be carried on to now, with discussion, that were not either resolved, or their continuation. And so I was saying that I have reviewed the minutes, but I would like at a later time to tag those and bring them back for discussion, because they're not resolved.
Okay. All right, is there a possibility you could identify those items that need review, so that we can review those again for work session, have those ready for the November town meeting for approval?
I can, I can, again, it's nothing that would stop the minutes from being passed.
Yes. Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to see if we can get that done that way. That way, we can get all of our sets of minutes approved. Okay?
No, I'm saying, ma'am, mayor, I'm not saying belabor.
No, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
You're ready, you just realize we have certain corrections, I understand that.
No, not corrections, no, continuations of things that do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Continuations.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to, at this time, I will accept the motion for approval of the minutes for the May nineteenth twenty twenty-one, it was a public hearing, May nineteenth twenty twenty-one, the town meeting, September fourteenth twenty twenty-one, and September fifteenth. May I receive a motion for approval of those minutes? I get a second.
Second.
Then probably move to the second, that we approve the minutes that have been mentioned as I read through those. Are there any questions on the motion? If there are no questions, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Ma'am Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Waiters.
Aye.
Councilmember Uppity Doolwater.
Aye.
Councilmember Morris.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
And Councilmember Datsin.
Aye, I understand.
Okay. All right, well, we still have, so the ayes have it, we have, any extensions, we have one, one extension, any noes. So those minutes are approved, we will review for the information that Councilmember Waiters mentioned, for that particular set of minutes. All right, we're going to move on down to our Police Department report, and Lieutenant Ivy, would you please come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Town of Fairmont Heights. Police report, September twenty twenty-one. The activities, the Fairmont Heights Police Department totaled two hundred calls for service for the month of September of twenty twenty-one, with the difference of one hundred and fifty-five calls for the month of August twenty twenty-one. The Fairmont Heights Police Department conducted patrols along with assistance of code enforcement, incoming calls to the station, and concerns and issues that are brought to the attention of the mayor and the council. A particular crime scene incident involving a citizen robbery of a cell phone, but there was no harm that was done to the victim. There was an assault of a victim at the Fairmont Heights Library, which occurred, which were no life-threatening injuries. Another assault victim took place at a local business within the Town of Fairmont Heights also. There was no life-threatening injuries, and medical attention was refused while on the scene. A severe domestic violence incident involving injuries that were placed to that victim, having received medical attention given on the scene, and there were no life-threatening injuries that occurred with it. And also, on doing that domestic, the suspect was arrested and transported to Prince George's County Department of Corrections. Concerning updates, you say you need me to speak up?
Oh, tell me, is your mic up here?
It's working.
Okay.
Okay, it's working, okay. The update, Lieutenant Ivy's training with the Maryland Municipal League Executive Association that was completed for the year of twenty twenty-one. Investigations with local law enforcement agencies that were conducted. The state's Attorney's Office Carjacking Task Force, along with municipal partnerships for, for crime prevention stats, updates, and regional information with the District of Columbia Metropolitan Police Department. The Prince George's County Public Schools Emergency Plan submitted to each municipal police department for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. And certificates were presented to the Mount Rainier Police Department at their Safety Night event, expressing their sincere gratitude for their assistance with the Fairmont Heights Memorial Day event. And patrol, the Fairmont Heights Police Department continues to have assistance with Prince George's County Police, and also assistance with the Town of C-Plaza. Mayor, why I'm up, I'm going to share for you citizens, while Mr. Pinkney's out, that y'all will excuse him due to his illness, and read his report, I don't know if he was next.
Okay. He, well, as a matter of fact, you might as well go on, and just, since you have his report right there.
Yes ma'am.
You can go on and just take him along with.
Okay, the code enforcement report for September the ninth through October the seventh. During the period, there were issued five notices of violations and correction action.
Lieutenant, he can't, he can't speak up, he can't.
Okay, I'll speak up, because, because, because Mark is saying that it's on. Okay. Okay, I'll speak up for you. Three for overgrown vegetation, one for unlawful vehicles on property, and one for accumulation of trash and debris. During this period, five civil citations totaling two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that were issued. Illegal dumping, parking on unpaved area, accessory structures, occupancy permit required one. On September the twenty-ninth twenty twenty-one, the District Court of Maryland for Prince George's County awarded the Town of Fairmont Heights two thousand plus for court calls for the following. At nine zero three fifty-seven Place, five hundred, six one twelve sixty-first Avenue, five hundred, seven fourteen sixtieth Place, one thousand. And there were tax liens placed on those properties for those amounts. Also during this period, there were issued two rental license. Seven zero nine sixty-second Avenue, one hundred, sixty-eleven Elder Street, one hundred dollars. During this period, also was issued two vacant building registration fees. At five nine zero four H Street, two hundred dollars, seven two one fifty-eight Avenue, two hundred dollars. Also, what Mr. Pinkney has done during this period, he has started putting together a before and an after photo gallery of all the progress that has been made in the Town of Fairmont Heights over the last few years. That would conclude the police report and code enforcement report. And mayor, council, and citizens, I would like to share one, and I'm just as just for sharing, based upon the Code of Ordinance of the Town of Fairmont Heights, Maryland. This is in Chapter Three, Peace and Good Order, Article One, Section three dash one zero two, discretion of police officers. Whenever any police officer shall, in the exercise of reasonable judgment, decide that the presence of any person in any public place is causing, or is likely to cause, any other conditions enumerated as prohibited in this article. He may, if he deems necessary for the preservation of the public peace and safety, order such person to leave such place, any person who shall refuse to leave after being ordered to do so by the police officer, shall be guilty of a violation of the provision of this article. I just wanted to share that based upon the Code Ordinance of the Town of Fairmont Heights, peace and good order, and when it states, public peace and safety. Also, I just wanted to share that with the mayor and the council, and the citizens of the Town of Fairmont Heights also too. And at any time in that, I'll share more in depth with the upcoming report for the month of October, but also too, if at any time I had to use discretion, as well as that public peace, that things need to cease and desist, that would be done by the police department. Thank you, citizens, and mayor, council. Yes ma'am.
Lieutenant Ivy, I do have something that I would like to have you put with Mr. Pinkney's report.
Yes ma'am.
I was given this by a citizen that stated that the property at six sixty-six eleven sixtieth Place.
Sixty-six eleven?
Uh, sixty-eleven sixtieth Place. Is renting that property without a license, and I'd like for him to look into that, if he would.
Yes ma'am.
I'll, I can provide you with this at the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right, anything, all right, thank you so much.
All right, are there any questions or any discussion with Lieutenant Ivy? All right, thank you, Lieutenant.
Yes ma'am.
Mrs. Walter, would you come forward?
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and citizens. I'll be reporting through the end of September. As of the end of September, our total assets, which includes all of our accounts, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand fifty-four dollars. Our income for the month of September, thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars seventy-four cent. Our total expenses, twenty-three thousand five hundred seventeen dollars thirty-eight cent, for a net income for September of twelve thousand sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cent. Comparing fiscal year twenty twenty-one to fiscal year twenty twenty. Our income in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, at this time, is eleven thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cent higher than our income in fiscal year twenty twenty. Our expenses, as of September thirty-first twenty twenty-one, are forty-five thousand two hundred twelve dollars nine three cents less than our expenses as of the same time last year. I'd also like to share, first, I'll start with the update from the, I'll just say, art funds. We were, we, we received notification that the Town of Fairmont Heights will receive six hundred seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, of which fifty percent, which is three hundred three thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and forty-two cent, will be deposited into the town's account. The mayor and council will be opening a separate account for those funds to be placed in, so that those funds are not commingled with any other funds, and those funds are easy to be tracked. At the last meeting, we updated you on the progress of the World War Two monument. We did receive our findings and our final report from the Hicks, Prince George's County Social Preservation Commission. We are thankful that they have approved part of the request. So they have approved, they have approved the repairs to the actual monument structure, and to the papers around it. They did not approve our request for the wall. Ms. Remy and I have talked, we will be going back after the conclusion, conclusion of this grant, we will look at going back and trying to get the rest of the site done. Because it took them so long, we are going to ask them to give us an extension, just in case we are unable to meet the deadline that they, that they have given. Ma'am Martin, you have expressed that you would like to use the monument for Veterans Day, and we're going to do all that we can to make that happen. However, we do have to, they have to approve the request for proposal, and because it's different now, we do have to go back and ask them, will they, will they approve the modification? Because it does not include the wall. So we will contact them, and preferably, they will say that they will approve it. Once we have completed the work, we do have to have them come out and inspect the work within a certain timeframe, and then they also prior to us giving, doing the work, they have to give us a permit. So we do have some guidelines that we have to follow, because the funds, because there's a historic easement, there's a present, there's an easement on the memorial. Oh, it was in my notes, sorry. We did, in the work session, we did talk about the shed for public works, I just want to update the mayor and council. The space that we have can hold a shed that is twenty by twenty-four, based upon the space that has been identified. That would be the largest that we think would be able to fit on there. This will come back up again, because we did not have, we do not have the final decision as determining which type of shed you'd like, but we were asked to take a look at what size could fit in that space, and it would be at least, at the most, a twenty by twenty-four, to give us space to also park the vehicles that the town has, as well as be able to park for the rental spaces that are used, and then still leave some space for additional rental spaces. And those are the main things I wanted to highlight, there are other things that we've talked about, but they would have to come back up in the, in the November work session. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes ma'am.
Are there any questions for the treasurer?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We're going to continue down to the town manager's report, Mr. Room, would you please come forward?
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council, citizens, and citizens in virtual land, good evening. My report is for the period September fifteenth twenty twenty-one to October seventh twenty twenty-one. CSEP is now referred to as the Center for Workforce Inclusion. This is a program that is federally funded, that provides funding for persons fifty-five years of age or older, to continue to have a productive life and enter back into the workforce. At the September meeting, the mayor and council gave me the approval to enter an agreement with CSEP, to commence interviewing applicants referred to CSEP. The, our interviews went well, it was a team effort with Ms. Tucker, Lieutenant Ivy, myself, interviewed two candidates, referred by CSEP, Mr. Lawrence Mentis and Pamela F. Norris. Mrs. Norris started on October twelfth, and it couldn't have started at a better time, because Mrs. Tucker was on vacation, and she filled in, really did a great job. Mrs. Norris, dropping to see Mrs. Norris, and hopefully, she'll come to the next meeting. She's retired from the District of Columbia Department of Housing and Community Development. In addition to that, she informed me today that she, her parents have eighty years, and herself, they are avid gardeners, and she will be making donations of, of produce to our farmer's market, which will be held on Saturday. So I really, really thank her for coming in and being a team player already. I've been working on the website, of course, for, for the month of October, and I've had discussion with Mr. Gray of Steelback, so we continue updating Channel Eleven, so that information would be coming forward, and we're going to try to tie in the website along with TV channel. BRIC, which is an acronym, the Federal Emergency Management FEMA, funded the twenty-twenty-one building, Brazil, Brazil Get Infrastructure Communities, which was BRIC. And so I've been working with the county, and I want to thank Councilmember Waiters, who actually updated and responded to this emergency management to include Fairmont Heights. And I've been working with BRIC One, that included North Brentwood, Edmondston, Eagle Harbor, Bladensburg, Brentwood, Fairmont Heights, and Chevrolet. We did put together our grant application, and the county did submit a notice of interest in NOI on August the thirty-first, and we met the deadline, we expected response by the end of October. For many of you who've contacted the mayor and council or my office, and what BRIC will address is the problem with erosion in water and stormwater management. As I drive around the town, many of your streets, on a dry day, you'll see water, alleys are flooding, and so we have all kinds of problems as far as related to climate warming. So we're hoping that we are, that the county, on behalf of the towns I just read, that we may receive money to help first study and identify the problem, so we can move forward to correct this problem of water. And our streets and basements are being flooded, and, and other kinds of problems as a result of stormwater. The Public Works Department, I applaud them, they've been very busy toward the end of summer, and I, the mayor and council, that we were able to purchase a power wash equipment, and so the exterior buildings have been completed. We're also cleaning out stormwater drains, and that's an ongoing process, because, of course, this time of year, you have a lot of leaves down, and of course, it's a rainy season, and they certainly assisted me with the farmer's market, it would not have been a success without them. Also, for those who are living in the impact area of forty-seven forty-one Joss Street of Eastern Avenue, WSSC is installing a twenty, two hundred seventy-four feet, they are installing two hundred seventy-four feet of eight-inch pipe, and they started this on September twentieth, and I think the work is ongoing. If you live in the impacted area, or you have any problems, please let me know, so I can stay in touch with WSSC. That includes not only me, but Mr. Pinkney. Economic Community Development, Susan had mentioned, the grants that we received, is the continuation. I'm happy to announce that the town was awarded a five-thousand-dollar grant by the Prince George's County Arts and Humanities. The check has already been received, and so we'll be working with, with making use of the funds through art. And, and I don't want to sound like a, a history professor, but if you look at any of the towns during the Renaissance, they're all built around art, including the District of Columbia, our capital. So art is a huge part of economic and community development, so I'm hoping through the ARP funding and other funding, that we're able to bring more money into the town for art. But for this five-thousand-dollar check, we are hoping to do some of the following. We're going to designs, design, stencil, and paint all manhole and stormwater drain covers throughout the town. We want to design, and stencil, and paint all cable boxes. I was in Heightsville yesterday, and I had a beautiful job they did with painting all their cable boxes, and also in. And also, and if you get a chance, go to Glen Arden and look at what they've done with painting all their utility boxes. And where my favorite place, Harson Dickies, they even painted the mechanical parts on top of the building, made it really beautiful. We're going to design and create, install three historic district gateway signs, and hold a series of workshops featuring current and local artists across different genres. And along with help of Councilman Waite and Ms. Walker, we are looking at ways we can leverage the $5,000. So we're looking for an additional $10,000 to match. The Fairmont Heights Community Development Corporation, I did, Ms. Capers? I worked really with the group. I assisted the David Design Center. And the Fairmont Heights Community Development Corporation, we're writing a grant and submitting it to the Maryland Department of Housing Community Development. Prior to the meeting, I did ask her, I get anxious, if we haven't received it yet, but you said it would be December. Yeah, it'll be sometime in December. So we feel confident that we will receive the fund. The Economic Community Development Committee meets the third Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, Saturday each month, according to council member Waite's.
Thursday.
The third Thursday, I'm sorry. There will be no meeting this week, I can tell you that. Okay. The Green Team, we hold our regular monthly meeting on the fourth Thursday each month. Due to COVID, the meetings are all held virtually. The Green Team met on Thursday, the 23rd, at 6:30. There were 14 participants on the line. And I want to talk about my passion and the success of the first, our first farmer's market. I mean, we may have hit and miss and done a few farmer's markets over the year, but this was a continuing effort. And the response from the citizens and from the staff has just been above and beyond. But the farmer's market is coming to an end. It's fall, it's not a production season. We will have our last market on Saturday, 21st, from 9:00. And I really, we do not, I receive calls from citizens asking for baked goods and for different kinds of greens and for okra. People are really enjoying this, and I've been learning and listening to all kinds of recipes. But just the excitement is wonderful. I wanted to give a special thanks to our regular Green Team members, Councilmember Waite, Councilmember Wooddozer, Ms. Daisy Capers, Mac Hill, Lottie Winfield, our staff, Donnell Tuckler, Warren Eagleston. And also, I want to give a special thank you to, where did you go, Ms. Walker, for her donations of arts and supplies. And this week, she's already committed to her donation of pumpkins. And so hopefully, we will be coming out soon with the news, or you'll see all those wonderful pictures in the news or add on the website. Mayor Martin, I want to give a special thank you to you. She's a faithful patron for the farmer's market, and again, I really want to thank you. And this goes back to the county's Department of Economic Community Development. A special thank you to our local Prince George's County farmers, the Miller's Farm and that family. And then in Southern Maryland, the Swan Farm, which is located in, where I live, in Calvert County. But both of these farms supply produce to all the local grocery stores that you shop, to Giant, to Safeway. When you go there, you see peaches and watermelon and green base, that's where they come from, Miller's Farm. So it's a wonderful thing, knowing that our local farmers produce the food that you eat. Ms. Up, thank you for your support for the farmer's market, and I really appreciate that. That ends my reports.
Please mute yourself, please mute yourself on the line. Thank you, Ms. Rumi. Are there any questions, Ms. Nancy? Please mute yourself on the line. Okay, we're doing reports, we're doing reports. Alright, okay, thank you very much, Ms. Rumi. Was there any other information from Ms. Rumi? Yes, Ms.?
I want, I want to know when they will stall on a bump on James Street. You can say it, you can say it, say it, one year, one year, never year.
I know.
You can wait till I get killed, I get a suitcase, then you can start.
No.
Everybody filed down James Street. You ain't not, you ain't not, you young ditherbug. And he would order, be loud, bopple in the car.
Yeah.
They'll fly down James Street. I'm sitting in front of a boy, I didn't see. If you say you would do it, why can't you do it?
I know, and you know what? I am completely in agreement, Mr. Colby. It's that, that is so vital. And the thing about it is that we are trying to get it to that point. I think, well, you haven't been here for some of the other meetings, but I've been talking about it and talking about it, and we have to move into that because not only are they doing it over there, they're doing it all over the town. These are international raceways. They come through and they just jet through. Oh, yeah, well, see, and then here, they go from Addison on to Sheriff Road, and I mean, they're flying. They are flying, and nothing stops, and see, they just figure they're going to get away with it. But if a speed bump, I was coming around the circle yesterday, the speed bump would bump them and make them slow down. So I'm a hundred percent in agreement with you. That was one of the things that we knew that we can do it. We just have to get it to that point to make it happen. So I'm in agreement with you. Don't, you know, don't think that you're alone in that. And I hope sooner rather than later, we're going to get that done. I can't give you a timeline, but I hope that sooner rather than later, we're going to get that done. And I'm not saying first of the year, because I know that there's a process that has to go through, but it needs to happen. Because I talked about even in the town work session, the whole concept, even in apartment buildings even have speed humps now. So, you know, we're here in a town, and there's no reason, I can see if we couldn't afford to get it, but we can. So we gotta move forward with it. And I, those are two of my hot items that I'm, you know, wishing to push forward, is the speed humps and the redoing of these restrooms because they are ancient and they're to the point where their safety hazard. Okay? So I'm in agreement with you. And you just hang in there with us a little while longer. I'm not going to give you a date, but that has got to happen because it's so dangerous. Because we know the issue with the speed humps, that's definitely a safety issue. It's safety. Yeah, because they don't want to mess up their cars. So they're going to slow down for that speed bump. Everybody has them. Like I said, even apartment buildings, the apartments have them. You know, I cut through down there in Largo, hasn't been them one a couple of months ago. And to get through there, you know, sometimes you make a little turn, you come up in an apartment section. Even to get through there, you got all kinds of speed hump, just to get through there. Yeah, yeah, so I feel you, I feel you. And like I said, I want to see something happen. And see, remember that I have to get the whole participation from the council to move it forward. And this has got to happen, because it's vital, it's vital, yeah.
The thing about that, sorry, so sorry. The thing about that is, they've been my neighbors for 18 years. And I witnessed this with them. Now, it's not the people in the neighborhood that are speeding through. It's these people that's coming off of Eastern Avenue, Addison Road, Sheriff Road.
Yeah.
Now, I've priced portable, movable speed humps. You can get four for less than $1,000.
Oh, yeah.
I've heard numbers dropped tonight, which is astounding. You're saying 300,000? Going to the town of Fairmont Heights, and you can't spend less than $1,000?
Right.
To protect the citizens that live here? Now, that doesn't make sense, because I see kids.
Yeah.
I see elders, I see us, I see my neighbors, daily, daily. Doing things to their cars, working on their cars, pulling groceries, all items from their cars. I see the kids playing. The one thing that I do not want to happen is for me to witness somebody that I see on a daily basis get hit by some damn idiot. I don't, I don't want to see that. I do not want to see that.
I agree, I agree.
Because my neighbor, right there.
I agree.
I love them dearly, and they're elderly. I would do anything in the world for them.
Yeah.
But if I see anything happen to them, somebody's going to jail, somebody's going to damn hospital. That's the way I feel.
Okay.
Now, these speed humps, they are very inexpensive. They don't cost $2,000, $3,000, $4,000. Why they haven't been put in place, I have no idea.
Okay, well, like I said, I believe you wholeheartedly, and I want, like I said, I have to get the whole group on board to move forward with it. But this is something that is so vital. I don't want to just talk about it either, because I realize the importance of it. Will you all, please, just one person, Ms. Saifat? I know, I understand, but I can't listen to, but Stacy, I can only listen to one person at a time. I'm being sincere about it. I understand. It should. It should, and I'm in agreement. Like I said, I see it and feel it every minute. Because as they come through here, they cut off from Addison, and they go on to Sheriff Road, and they're flying. And we have a large number of cars, it's a major cut through, right there, because 60th Avenue, it's major. It's a major cut through. Yeah, so I understand the importance. And I don't know what day we can actually sit down and begin to make this happen, but I'm going to see if I can push it to the limit, to the limit, okay? Because I'm like Mr. Colby, I don't want to keep on talking about it. But by the time I look down, I want to see the humps out there. Because other communities have, Ms. Saifat, excuse me for one moment, but I want to get down here as far as I can. I understand that, I understand, because I don't want it to go on and on and on, just. Because I don't, because I want to finish up here, so, and I have some important information to read into the record. No, you don't have to say, see, I'm talking to you, okay?
I'm saying is, if you want some citizens to get the bills and stuff, a piece of paperwork, or the town manager, maybe you got toilet paper and other supplies. I mean, this is just buying something that the residents need badly. And it just seems like an administrative function.
Okay, alright, I got, I, thank you, I have.
That you just put before the council, and just over certain amount, and they vote on it in front of the citizens, and they should approve it.
Well, whoever's on the line, will you please mute your line? Please mute your line. Okay, thank you very much, thank you all for that, okay? I'm going to move on down to new business, and I thank you, Ms. Rumi, for your report. I had, under new business, I had the presentation by Mr. Ricardo Harris, who has been selected as the chair for the Board of Elections. He was supposed to read into the record information that was given out in the work session. I'm going to read it now because I want to make sure that it goes in and it becomes a matter of record. And it's, it was addressed to Mayor Lillian Martin and Fairmont Heights Council. It was done on October 12th, which is work session. A certificate of recall. This letter is to notify the mayor and the council of Fairmont Heights that a certificate of recall has been issued for the removal of four council members. Those four members, Stella Hargrove, Patricia Ukwaka, Ukwaka, Jacqueline Morgan, and Glenn Morris. The total of 255 residents have signed a petition to remove those council members. Three members of the Fairmont Heights Board of Elections have certified the petition names, and addresses have been checked. These signatures were checked a second time against the Prince George's Board of Elections Registry to ensure the signatures of those residents of Fairmont Heights. The signatures are verified, therefore, the four council members are being recalled, and the recall is in process. According to the Fairmont Heights Charter, Section 1-29-A, council members may be removed from office if the following apply. Number one, failure to uphold the oath of office. Number two, malfeasance in office. Number three, misfeasance in office. And number four, nonfeasance in office. Within 10 days from filing the petition, the town's election supervisor shall ascertain by examination that the signatures are that of qualified voters. In accordance with the Town of Fairmont Heights Charter, Section 1-29-A, the Fairmont Heights Board of Elections do hereby confirm certification of the required number of signatures to initiate the recall of Stella Hargrove, Patricia Ukwaka, Jacqueline Morgan, and Glenn Morris. This certificate of recall is therefore signed by Ricardo Harris, Chief Election Judge. He was going to read this himself, but he became ill. He called Ms. Tucker and told her that he couldn't make it end tonight. So I'm reading this into the record so that it becomes a matter of record for the town. I'm going to continue down, because item number two on the new business is the contact. And this came in the form of a letter from Mrs. Rashida Jamison, and her new name now is Harriet. So she sent a letter, and I had promised at the last meeting that I would contact her concerning a meeting for the UKAP, their actions moving forward, and the 737 property and 711 Eastern Avenue. This came at 7:15 this evening, and the subject is in regard to the 711 project meeting. So she says, "Good evening. United Communities Against Poverty will conduct a public meeting in November of 2021 to present the 711 Eastern Avenue project to the Town of Fairmont Heights. Once the facility is confirmed for the meeting, we will send an official notice. We look forward to meeting all community stakeholders and welcome a positive atmosphere." And it's signed Rashida Jamison Harriet, President and CEO, United Communities Against Poverty, 1400 Doewood Lane, Capitol Heights, Maryland. This was received, she asked me to share this notice here. She's going to schedule this meeting, and it will be in November of this year. So as to what date, as soon as we get the date, we'll put that out to the community, and we all, we can prepare to have them to come in. And not only, I would get back in touch with her because I wanted to make sure that she understood too. We wanted to find out about 737 and 711. Because when I talked with her originally, I told her both. So I would definitely, I would definitely remind her of both of those projects. Okay? So I promise it would be read into the record. Alright, I'm going to continue down the agenda. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Mrs. Daisy Capers. And Ms. Capers, would you please come to the podium?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So oftentimes, we hear things in our ears, and we never get to say thank you to people who do so much for us because we are so busy thinking about what they didn't do or how they couldn't do. But we never really take time to thank them for what they did do. Today, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Ivy to come forward. I'm going to read a letter from my family to you. It's from the Capers' family to the mayor and town council. On August 15, 2021, Lieutenant Earl Ivy was en route to an activity planned for Fairmont Heights and other 5th District police officers. He had heard that Daisy Capers had been hospitalized or admitted to Maryland University Hospital. So he stopped by to see how she was doing. Upon arriving at the Maryland University campus at Largo, Maryland, he was told that the patient was to be discharged. There was no one there to pick this patient up. She was alone because she drove her car to the hospital. But you know what? He went right into action and thought about what he could do to help. He says, "I'll take her." He signed me out of the hospital and made sure that I was brought home safely. So, I would like to say on behalf of my family. I would like to say on behalf of my family, who says to you how much they appreciate you taking care of me? Because you know what? I guess I mean a lot to them. But to you, Lieutenant Ivy, no matter how I could say thank you, I could never really let you know how I felt that day. Because when you're, you're my age, I'm seventy-eight now, I was seventy-seven then. But when you're that age and you're alone, yes, you can stand up and say, you know what, I'm going to do this. But having someone come along at that moment, in my mind, you were sent, you didn't come by yourself. And so to God, I give the glory and the thanks. So I present to you.
Oh, that's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
And the letter that's being written, once everybody in my family signs it, it will be given to the mayor and she will put it in your file.
That was so wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Capers. It's always good to recognize people when they do things, reach out to help you, because that's all we have in this world. We have nothing other than that. And you listen to what Colin Powell said, be kind. If you can't do that, we don't need, you know, what else are we really put here for? Other than get some work accomplished and being kind to people. The rest of it's not important. That is the final common denominator. So I wanted to say thank you so much, Ms. Capers, for recognizing him. Because often people don't think like that. They really don't. Alright, I'm going to continue down to old business, and we only have one piece of old business here. It's the, the date for the final public hearing for our vacant lot ordinance for the Town of Fairmont Heights. And as most people know, we've done two public hearings on the vacant lot ordinance. And this is something that our code enforcement officer has been requesting for a period of time. We fell into a big delay because of COVID. It has to happen. Every other community within the municipalities on this end of Prince George's County, everywhere, everybody has a vacant lot ordinance. Fairmont Heights doesn't have one, so we're just sort of just withering in the wind. And it's so vital to our overall general upkeep. Because when we look at a lot of these properties, they're just sitting, and some, some belong to county, some belong to people from out of state, they belong to all different types, and they need to be approached and they need to actually take, something has got to be done. So we're going to move forward with that. It was agreed to by the council. We had agreed on a date of November the eighth, but once Mrs. Tucker contacted the, the, um, the company that we use to post all of our hearings, we could not make it by that deadline. The new deadline, because you have to do a two-week notification, it has to be posted in the paper. So the next day that we could get it would be November seventeenth. We were trying to do the eighth, and we have to do the seventeenth. I need to find out the pleasure of the council to move forward on this November seventeenth at six o'clock PM because we need to contact the company. Their next posting will be on Tuesday. So we could get it, put in the paper and let it run for that two-week period, you know, for that, uh, the timeframe, that two-week window. If everybody says yea, we will move forward to get it done on the seventeenth at six o'clock. So what is the pleasure of the council?
I agree.
Okay, you agree? Councilmember Waiters?
During the town meeting?
Well, it's going to be before the town meeting. It's at six o'clock.
You calling for motion?
No, no, I'm not, I'm just asking for the consensus from the council so that we can post it.
Okay.
Okay, alright, uh, Councilmember Morgan? Councilmember? Well, we, yeah, sometimes it might take that much, and we don't want to have it jammed up. If we don't need that whole hour, we could possibly, it's best to have that time because people might want to talk about it, or maybe you could walk around and get a cup of coffee or whatever before the town meeting. You know, you like to do that so it's not jammed up.
I'll get here, but I'm probably going to be late.
Okay, so is that timing okay and the date? Okay, the seventeenth. Uh, Councilmember Wood Dodson? Okay, so we'll move forward, Ms. Tucker, that's, that's okay. We'll move forward with that date. Okay, I'll make a note here. No, because it hasn't been put in the paper yet. It hasn't, hasn't been advertised yet, yeah, okay, okay.
Now, the public hearing, does, does that have any bearing on whether or not we, I mean, does the public hearing give the residents an opportunity to make amendments or suggestions, alterations to this legislation, or is it just going through as it is?
No, well, that is the time when the public has the opportunity to talk about the pros and the cons. And then, you know, that's where the final decision, the final decision is not made until later. But you know, you have to have that hearing so that the public can be heard.
Okay, so can, can that legislation, is, is it up on the, um, website or any place where people can take a look and get to me at, at exactly what it entails?
Yes, if it's not there, it can be put. Is it there, Mr. Rumi?
Yeah, it, it's there.
It's on the, it's on the website?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, so if you would go and examine it on the website, is the corrected version there, Mr. Rumi?
I can look to see what version.
Would you verify? Because you know, there were some corrections that were made, too, okay?
Is the notice going to go out to the, to the flyer or something, letting people know about it? And are the people that have vacant lots going to be notified?
The flyer will go out now. All the people that have the vacant lots, they, there is a, there was a scale model for the people with the vacant lots, and they were all itemized in red. So we hadn't really decided as to how we could notify each one of those people on the vacant lot list. It, it probably would be good, but I don't know how we could do that, so don't let me say how we'll do it. It probably would be good if maybe a letter could go to each one of those people. But then again, the legislation hasn't been approved, so I don't know what, you know, all you could probably say is that we're going to have a hearing, you know?
Just want to understand the process.
Yeah, yeah.
I have some questions first, I will hold up the screen.
Okay, alright, okay, we're going to continue on down the agenda. And, um, we, we've gotten down to the section for the mayor's report. And I just have a few things that I would really like to say. I wanted to let everyone know that our final Board of Elections person was sworn in two weeks ago. And, you know, the, the night that everybody else was sworn in, she was out and she could not be sworn in. So I came, I brought her in and I came here like on a Thursday and I had the witnesses. It was Ms. Tucker and Lieutenant Ivy, and we took the pictures, and she was sworn in. So all of our members are sworn, that every, all of the four people have been properly sworn. And her name is Megan Suley, Suley, she lives on J Street. So I wanted everyone to know that. I had on my list here, and I'm not going to talk about it, I think maybe Councilmember Morgan might want to talk about the free ball days. You want to talk about that? Okay. Uh, for Veterans Day, we haven't planned any, um, any activities, but we have been, on Veterans Day, we've been included with Sea Pleasant and Capitol Heights for a wreath laying. So we plan to do that, again, just to lay a wreath, and we normally do it at ten o'clock every Veterans Day. So we'll lay the wreath and we'll, hopefully, people will come out. The last time, I think we had about three or four people, but at one time, it used to be a very large group of people that would come out to honor not only the veterans of Fairmont Heights, but just veterans in general. So that would be November eleventh at ten o'clock. So just be on the lookout for that. If you can, please come around. Um, I wanted to mention something too about Mrs. Capers and the, the program that she had last Saturday. That was last Saturday, wasn't it? Because we got so many things running together. For the CDC breakfast, it was, it was a prayer breakfast, it was a gathering. But what happened was, it was so noteworthy because she just got two tents and some tables and draped them and draped some chairs and did the prayer breakfast right out there on the lawn, right at the ravine, and it was absolutely fabulous. And I guess she just did it at her own expense, but it was so good because it was for the Town of Fairmont Heights. It was not hers. And I mean, you know what I'm saying, indirectly it was hers, but it was for the Town of Fairmont Heights. And she poured her spirit into it. The people that came, they had a wonderful spirit too. Because some of these people, I didn't even know. And as I was talking to one of the gentlemen, he was all dressed, and I could tell he was really Afrocentric and into everything that had been going on through history. Because he had on an African robe and he had the, the logo on his mask. I'm saying, yeah, he, he knows what's happening. He's one of the ancestors. So as I talk with him, I found out that he used to be the armor bearer for the pastor of my church. I was really, that was really interesting. But I wanted to just give you props for doing that because you have been carrying the torch for the CDC. And, and, and I know it's a, it's a rugged job. Because on every end, you got your coattails being pulled. This not going to work. This is nothing. I don't have time. But you, you've been steadfast in doing it. So I wanted to let you know that I was watching.
Thank you so much.
Yes, yes. Okay, alright, so that's, that's always good with me. Always good. Yes, uh-huh. Okay, I also wanted to talk about, and this is going to be the last item I'm going to talk about right now because we have something else that needs to go into the record, and I think we forgot to put it on this list, but I'm going to read it. Um, I was reading an article earlier this morning that popped up on my cell phone, and it was about the, the city of College Park. Do you know for ARP funding, they got ten million dollars? And guess what? Guess what they're going to do with it? They're going to take it and build some housing for those less fortunate right downtown in College Park. For the people that can't afford to live there, because you know what the rents are like in College Park. Their rent is probably three to four thousand dollars per month. But they're going to make it available and they're going to build some housing for seniors and for people that cannot afford to live in College Park. I was impressed by that. I don't know how many houses they're going to, uh, how many apartments they're going to build. I don't know what, but all I know is that when I saw that, it warmed my heart. Because somebody has to be looking out for all of us. We don't know when we won't be able to even pay our rent. Because believe you, it's just a paycheck away. It's just a paycheck. So I wanted to put that out there, but I wanted to say, with them getting that amount of money, at least they thought about reaching back and pulling somebody up with them. So I wanted to also, now let me read this into the record because I think we forgot to, to add this to our agenda. This is a letter that came from our attorney. This is concerning the Open Meetings Compliance Board. And he sent this, he said, "Dear Mayor, please be advised, the Open Meetings Compliance Board has issued its decision regarding the complaint filed by Fairmont Heights Citizens Association. As you will see, the board found the town in violation of several provisions of the Open Meetings Act, while exonerating the town on several other allegations. Specifically, the board found the town in violation on the following issues. Failing to provide adequate notice of certain meetings, number one. Number two, failing to follow the proper procedure for closing sessions. Number three, failing to include details in closed session minutes. And number four, failing to timely prepare some minutes. Okay, as you know, we had no choice but to concede to some of these violations in our response. We did mount a defense to the allegation of not preparing timely minutes due to being short-staffed, but our argument was rejected by the board. However, the board did not found violations for not posting minutes online to the extent practicable and failing to provide an agenda for the special meeting held on June tenth, twenty twenty-one. Under the law, we have to make a public acknowledgement of the finding of the board in the next open meeting, which is tonight. As discussed, this was done in the public meeting tonight. This can be done in the public meeting tonight. In addition to making a public announcement, you will be required to give a summary of the board's opinion of the meeting at the meeting. Furthermore, a majority of the mayor and council must sign a copy of the opinion and return it. Return the signed copy to the board. This is a legal requirement we must comply with. Going forward, we must follow the requirements of the Open Meeting Acts in all respects. Extensive training for staff and elected officials should be strongly considered. Until this training occurs and before any closed sessions occur, please have the appropriate person review the law to ensure proper notice and other requirements are met. We must also make certain, make certain minutes are made available to the public as soon as possible after each public meeting. As stated in the opinion on page one thirty-one, which is the last page, archived videos of the meeting, of the meetings could serve as our official minutes, but we, we must let the public know and post them at a certain time. The opinion should be reviewed very carefully as the board offers sage advice on how to proceed moving forward. As always, I am available to answer any questions. Regards, Jason A. Deloche Esquire. So we are expected to sign off. I was looking here. I'm going to give a copy of this to the Civic Association members. There are, I think there are about eight or nine pages. But, um, I was looking for the section he wants us to sign. This has to go back to him, and he has to send it back to the board. So was there another page on him, Ms. Tucker? Because I don't see a page for us to sign.
I didn't see a page to sign.
Okay. Yes, would you make the copy of this one here so that they can get that, and you can send them his cover sheet also? But, uh, the, uh, let me see. How many people would like the Citizens Association members? How many people, okay, Mr. Vaughn, how about Ms. Way? How many people want copies of this? We're going to make the copies now. That's three, four, five. Five copies?
Sorry, I'm so far, I got you.
Okay, alright, and we, as soon as possible, we're going to get the sheet so that everybody can sign off. If you all could sort of meet with me tomorrow, or Ms. Tucker will have it available because that sheet with the signature page is not, not included in that one. So we need to get that signed and get it sent back to him, get a scan back to him. That's for everybody. If you would please try to get that done tomorrow.
Will we get a copy as well?
It was sent to you. It was sent to everybody. Did everybody else receive this? You got yours? Yeah. What about you, councilmember? Get your copy?
I'm looking at the email.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, everybody received it? Everybody received? Councilmember, what happened to you?
I'm asking, can I get a copy? Is what I'm asking.
You could get a copy, yeah, you need to let, go back there and tell Ms. Walken she's making them. Because if you don't have it, because it was sent to you, because she didn't figure you needed it. Okay.
I have the email as well.
Okay, okay, but that's what I'm saying. If you need one, get it now while she's making the copies. Okay. Okay, um, alright, so that covers it for the attorney. I think we've read most of this other information into the record. And that ends it for my report. Uh, at this time, I'm going to go around the room and let the other council members go on and give their reports, and we will take it from there. Uh, I can start. As a matter of fact, I can start with, huh? What about it? Okay, alright, uh, alright, uh, Councilmember Wood Dodson, I'll start with you.
Good evening. Uh, on Saturday, we had a breast cancer awareness and domestic violence program downstairs that was very lucrative and, um, Ms. Fan's daughter signed, which was the opening. very lucrative, and, um, Ms. Phan's daughter sang, which was the opening. Um, it gave clarity to the importance of women going for mammograms and their checkups, as well as the domestic violent, uh, part was very, um, kind of heart-wrenching, because you heard of different segments and people really testifying to things that had happened in their life and preventative measures that could happen. But the resources were good, because even people from the safe house in Upper Marlboro came and brought gifts to give to those that came to be a part of it. Uh, along with that, we, um, kind of networked with the LGBTQ community, as well as ladies that are either dancing or living promiscuous lives that we know, or could reach out to possibly to be able to assist them with resumes being done, trying to, uh, rejuvenate and help them to go back into the community, or know that it's not just over for them, but where someone else is here that care for you, that can do something to make things better, and give you a new beginning to revitalize your life, to have, uh, metamorphosis, new life. You know, befriend someone in need. Uh. I've also worked with UCAP. I've collected nine names. I do see a few, uh, seniors here. I'll collect. I've had nine that I gave today to, uh, Ms. Mel Brooks, that usually bring baskets into the community, and if anyone else know any seniors that would like a basket, or even if they're not cooking, we might find someone that will get a basket and cook it to put it in the home to make it pleasurable for the seniors, so I know I could make sure that happens. I don't know whether anyone has received information. I brought it up in the work session, but I'm receiving things that, uh, and a few of my neighbors on the street from the United States Department of Commerce in reference to the census. They're, uh, sending out information that are fact sheets that will help them even, uh, really have a better clarity with employment, who's not employed. I guess, uh, it says the US, uh, Bureau isn't required by law to protect your information, so whatever you're given will be in a safe place, but it gives legal authority. Uh, it really gives even more clarity of the population survey of what's in our community, and it will give stats on, uh, clarity for unemployment, people that are employed, and those that would like to be re-employed that are like twenty-five years or older, even by education default. So they're asking that you look and watch in your mailbox for the verbiage that's coming, so you can follow through with what need be done in the community. And that's, oh, in November, then we're not doing Harvest Day. Ms. Waiters and I are gonna do something November the twentieth, which is really something for me, because that's my birthday, and I'm giving it up for the kids. We're gonna have a light party, uh, LED glow-in-the-dark party. Yeah, but I mean, well, it's a glow-in-the-dark. Yeah, and she'll expound a little more, but we're gonna do something. I think the age is gonna be like from twelve to sixteen.
Twelve to sixteen, twelve to fifteen.
Fifteen.
But then we have to do something for the.
Little ones, right. And we'll do that maybe after the Harvest Day, so they can come in and they let their hair down, and they can come and masquerade like they wanna do. And that's my report.
So you'd like to learn?
Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. Now, I brought it up in work session. No one else embraced. Yeah, we're gonna do it later. They can come later, and we're gonna still acknowledge them, but it'll be after Thanksgiving.
Alright, um, thank you, councilman. Uh, Councilmember Morgan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmember Patricia, I've been doing what, uh, we were trying to do something to the other bedroom bed. Um, we're not sure if we're gonna go with it, but it's so, and that's coming up, that will be, we will, um, you know, present it in the, in the work session. We're looking at the calendar, and we need to show that it's during the time for November. So that's ongoing for discussion. The vote pickup days. We will have free, two free vote pickup days. The first day will be October twenty-seventh, and the second day will be November the tenth. Both of them are always days of June rule. Um, we're asking that if you put out mattresses and box curtains, you have to wrap it in plastic. If citizens need plastic, uh, we have plastic here at the town hall. It will be a fee added with it. So if you need it, just contact Ms. Tucker, and she has them in our office. And again, the two free vote days are twenty-seventh of October and November the tenth. We will send a flyer out also. Mayor, I'd like to read something into the record also. Fairmont Heights Board of Elections. Attention, Mr. Ricardo Harris, Chairman. Dear Mr. Harris, please accept this as my formal response to notification of the petition presented on October the twelfth, twenty twenty-one during the work session. Please note, I will not resign my seat as councilwoman to the town of Fairmont Heights for the re, for the following reasons. One, all allegations are false. Two, I have not been provided with a copy of the petition where I am one of the accused. I am entitled to face my accusers. Three, I am requesting training of the election board. It is my opinion, the board was tainted during the authentication of the petition. One member of the Fairmont Heights Citizens Association, namely Ms. Sylvia Sopax, was found present in the building while she was escorted out, which demonstrates bias. Number four, I demand to be afforded all the right as per the mayor in her recall. Five, I also demand the opportunity to answer all allegations before the Ethics Committee to be determined if any or all misconduct has been committed by me. Six, I am requesting that the petitioner present to me the evidence that as the four, A, I have and without the approval of the council not upheld my oath of office. B, I have and without the approval of the council, committed numerous acts of malfeasance, misfeasance, and non-feasance that serve their personal interests. C, I have and without the approval of the council, ignored the will of the residents, violate laws, waste and wasted tax dollars. D, I have and without the approval of the council, prevent the town of Fairmont Heights from serving in an acceptable manner. Seven, I am requesting that the petitioner present to me evidence that as collectively the four, A, I have and without the approval of the council, failed to manage town staff resulting in the wrongful firing of the public works supervisor and the national publicized alleged rape of a citizen by an HIV-affected town police officer in the town hall. B, I have and without the approval of the council, failed to appoint an ethics commissioner. C, I have and without the approval of the council, fired a very successful grant writer over one thousand dollars for the town in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. D, I have and without the approval of the council, wasted thousands of dollars paying contractors to collect trash and for truck repairs instead of getting a new trash truck in a timely manner. E, I have and without the approval of the council, routinely violated the Opens Meeting Act. F, I have and without the approval of the council, failed to operate effective communication systems with the residents in spite of paying thousands of taxpayer dollars to communicate vendors. G, I have and without the approval of the council, failed to respond to at all to residents' requests for action and information. E, as the liaison to the Public Works Department, I am requesting that the petitioner provide evidence to the following. A, I have and without the approval of the council, did not properly provide personal protective equipment to employees during the pandemic. B, I have and without the approval of the council, had the supervisor wrongfully fired and prevented the mayor from purchasing a new trash, uh, truck vehicles while misappropriating tax dollars on trash collection, contractors, and vehicle repairs. Respectfully, Jacqueline Morgan. And I have a copy for Mr. Harris and the election board. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, council member Waiters?
I'm gonna give my report, Madam Mayor, but I'm gonna say this about what had just happened. You called for the council reports, and you got a response to the election board. The last time we were here, when the election board submitted this, we got a copy of what was submitted. Things were read into public record that came from the election board, and there were some questions. Neither of us had the, had the, um, the charter open and available. There's made reference to what happened to you when you were recalled. You did not take up the town's, uh, uh, meeting time. I believe that happened in a separate meeting when you responded personally, on your own, in your own way. But it did not take up the town's time for the town meeting. So, so I do want to, since this wasn't available last, because this prolongs my report, and I hope this doesn't go further, because that reading goes to the election board, not us. However, 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 question in terms of timeliness, last month, and I don't understand why the council doesn't have the charter in front of them when we come to these meetings. But according to the charter, in short, they had five days. Five days to decide whether they were gonna step down. That expired yesterday. So my question is, was that submitted to the election board yesterday? If not, your time has expired. At the same time, you're supposed to, we're supposed to be notified of that decision. We have not been notified. So if you guys make some announcement in this room, it's the wrong way to do it. Read the charter. Read the charter. So ma'am, I'm not asking for questions or discussion. She called on me, and I'm voicing my opinion on what you just did, because, yeah, that's not the way to do it. It's not the way to do it. It is not, not in this meeting. If the petition or an amended petition shall be found by the town election supervisor to be sufficient, the town shall be submitted, the same shall be submitted with the town election supervisor, um, certificate to the council without delay. They did that. And the council shall, if the officer sought, to be removed, does not resign within five days thereafter, thereupon order an election to be held on the date fixed by them, not less than thirty, no more than forty-five, from the date of the town elections supervisor's certificate, which we received last week. Time has started. Of the town supervisor's certificate, that a sufficient petition was filed, that was done, provided, however, that if another election is taking place, and it just goes on and say for another election to take place, that there will be no, be no special election. So there will be a special election. But this is not the way. They're supposed to let us know that they're not stepping down. This right here rebuttal, this I'm not going, this calling back, this is not right. That's not for this meeting. And we are not to sit here and defend them in it. They are just supposed to say whether they are or not, and that's it.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's my response. Now, I'll give my report, but that's my response. I hope nobody's coming behind this. I hope nobody's coming behind this.
Go on, do your, finish your report then.
I hope nobody's coming, and I hope they submit it yesterday. Yesterday. Thank you. Now, I, I said the last time, the last thing I'm gonna say is, is response to this open meetings, um, and, 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 and hearing and signing for, too many times I have sat here and said, you can't do this, and you can't do that. We violated open meetings, got certified so we could go into executive session, and we are here with two hundred pages of violations? And my name is tied to it. So I'm offended that somebody was sitting here and, and, and rebut something that was put, I, I wasn't recalled. Don't take up my time. I'm ready to give my report. But I got two hundred pages that I have to read, or two hundred pages of response from these citizens for violating open meetings for two years, and we sit here and try to smooth things over. Lastly, I'm sorry, I did not wanna go here, but that right there is not, that's disrespectful. That's disrespectful. I've sat here with y'all, time and time again, and been accused of being abusible with that. No, we don't need no reset. We don't need no reset. We don't need a reset.
Councilmember, would you go on and get your report?
Sir, the mayor's not called you forth to do anything that you're doing right now. It's, she's got to gather. She's got to gather. She gave me an opportunity to talk, okay? Now, so, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because every time, every time this happens, y'all think something wrong with me. I'm just bold enough to speak to it. Excuse me? Don't, listen, I need to talk about respect, sweetheart. Don't, don't, don't. They don't need to talk while I'm talking, and you let them do it every time.
I, I don't let anybody.
You asked me to, and you asked me, and I said I had a comment, so I have the floor.
So you have the comment, so now it's time for your report.
No, I have the floor.
Yeah, would you please give your report?
I have the floor. Whatever I do, I have the floor. You used the floor to me.
I did.
Okay. Economic development. Economic development, I decided to postpone the meeting for tomorrow with, with, um, a lot of things that are going on. We have a priority for the fencing, for the four point four acres, uh, the main street, the branding of the community and emergency planning. I just take to keep coming to a meeting and saying, well, this is what we're working on, this is what we're working with, no production. So we had a community input meeting, which was good. And now I feel the significant need to follow with stakeholder meetings for further community input. There's so much development that's going on around us, and we're not even talking to developers. We're not even solicitors, we're not even having that conversation. I also wanna bring to your attention, Madam Mayor, that there are things that I'm trying to, efforts that I'm trying to um, put forth in economic development. And I think we're doing the same thing, and, and that's in terms of the seven thirty-seven property and the seven eleven property. I try to bring as much information as I can. Um, I don't know what you're doing, what you're doing, 'cause we've not communicated that, so I'm gonna take that off my plate. With Rashida, I did get, sir, your email. I'd rather take that off my plate, 'cause I tried to, you know, introduce and provide information in a smooth way, but we, we, it, it's not coming out the right way, so I'm, I'm gonna take that off my plate. Um, I have a lot of things, but I'm just not even gonna go there. The Harvest, the Glow Party that Councilmember with Dawson was speaking of is, um, she normally does the Harvest Day in October. Unfortunately, she's gonna be on travel that week, and so we decided to merge Harvest into Glow Party for the month of November fourth of June. That Glow Party is, will consist of various different items, just basically just hope that those of you who are holding up people in the rooms to know that. Um, it's, it'll be illuminated with the um, black lights, painting, and some arts. Um, I do want to mention that Black History Month is coming, Women's History Month is coming. And those are two events, even though it's now October, they'll be here before you know it and we need to start planning. Want to mention art at the market, when we have the uh, event at the market, the farmer's market. Ms. Papers is gone, I wanted to apologize to her, she wanted me to come down and talk about history at her prayer breakfast, but I was unable to because um, the youth showed up at the farmer's market to paint. Um, and that's another way and another avenue that we're using to communicate or engage with the community. Um, the parents not only bring their, their, um, I don't even say students, their children to the market, but they, while the parents are shopping, they are painting. Um, Mr. Remember, we have to talk about this more, 'cause Mr. Remember wants to shut, shut down the market because of the weather change and I'm trying to figure out how to do it on the inside because it's going so well. Um, I mentioned the CDC prayer breakfast. I'd asked and made a quick request for contracts, Madam Mayor, for the trash truck, um, for uh, the other um, that I won't mention because of our, well, for the um, TV um, video recording. And I also, the other one, the third one was, um, I don't know where we are with um, Comcast and broadcasting. That was it, that was the third thing.
Right.
Now, I have more, but I'm, I'm gonna stop right here. Stop right here.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, um, Councilmember.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is uh, my report from nine twenty twenty-one through ten twenty twenty-one. Um, the survey has been completed with the input of the Fairmont Heights Citizens Association. Three members served on the Department of Public Safety Committee. The intent is to have the mailers to each home in the town. I will be submitting a request to the mayor and council for postage. October the seventh, I attended the personnel meeting where we were informed of, of the new owners of the lot on Cold Street who is currently operating a business without a license with the attempt to operate a salvage yard. Now, that purpose, uh, which I did not get an opportunity to expand on in the work session. The code enforcer was just basically informing us, the question that he was posing to us, to those of us who attended that meeting was, do we want a salvage yard? And the majority of us answered, no. October the ninth, I attended the Fairmont Heights CDC prayer breakfast. They're proposing good things in regard to prevent, perfect, and to preservation of our history. October thirteenth, I attended a Zoom meeting with the state attorney's office on helping survivors of domestic violence with listening and just being there. Now, I too have a response to the, to the uh, notification of the petition. And I do need to express that the notice that we received said ten days. The notice that I received, again, is that.
You've done this before.
Okay.
I said it.
With, with respect for the time and of the citizens in this room, I too have my response for Mr. Harris. I don't know who to give it to because he's not here, he did assure me that he would be here to receive it. But in the meantime, I will not be resigning my seat and I will look forward to bringing you the truth of the allegations. And I do look forward to having the uh, the Citizens Association provide the evidence of each and every allegation that has been made against myself. Thank you, and that would end my report and my response.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Councilmember Morris.
Good evening, I too will not be resigning. And I too will point out the same things that Ms. Morgan pointed out, that um, we deserve to get the names of the petitions. I talked to Jason Delo, and he said so.
How are you gonna talk to Jason Delo about something that don't concern, what?
Yeah, he, okay, no, he, that's.
He can't do that.
No.
He could, that's personal, they can't do that. And in the midst, he comes to the attorney, the attorney can't help that.
He cannot, and, and I, I don't know why he called him, but all I can say, that was on, the attorney is the person that determines that. He determines that, and so would you finish, uh, Councilmember?
So, when I did call the attorney and I told him, I knew he couldn't respond, I wasn't asking for legal advice. But I wanted to let him know that there are two things that I think make this petition false. And that I would be sending it, and he, the only advice he said was to send it to the election board, which I will do. The names on the petition have ganged us all four together, therefore, the petition is actually unfair in the fact that I am lumped together as they are
He's still going.
With everybody on one petition. So therefore, the residents could have been tainted into signing a petition for one person but capturing all three. Independent petition should.
Madam Mayor, you have to stop this.
Okay, okay. Council, Councilmember, in regards to, would you finish up? You have the floor, would you just finish up your report, and the rest of it? Would you please put it in writing to the chair of the Board of Elections? And that will resolve that.
All right.
That will resolve.
So, again, last week, as I walked out the door, and I know everybody doesn't get along here, but I respect everybody and I, I demand respect as well. You can say what you wanna say about me, may not like the things that I say and do, but it doesn't give you the right to call names. As I walked out the door, Ms. Waiters mumbled under her breath as I asked Ms. Susan to move.
We can't, there, we can't, I know. Okay, okay, uh, Councilmember, okay, please, please, Councilmember. Go back to your seat.
Ma'am, Madam Mayor, please.
Mister, Mister Mars, Mister, Mister Mars, please, okay, okay. Okay, and please, let, let's just finalize this report and let's go to the line and then we go to the public, because we're, we're spinning our wheels.
I understand.
We're spinning our wheels.
So my apology is to Ms. Waiters. Because as I walked out the door the other night, I lost my cool, I was on the phone with my wife. My wife heard what I said and we had a long conversation, she asked me to come back and apologize. And I'm a man of my word, so I'm gonna apologize for saying what I said after you said what you said. You called me a fat bitch underneath your breath. My wife heard it on the phone.
Listen, 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 listen.
Okay.
That is so professional.
Let me, thank you.
You can say that, you don't have to use a sound prompter, you can say that to me, sir.
Councilmember, Councilmember.
You can say that to me. If you're gonna say you wanna apologize, then let it leave it alone. Just leave it, because.
Apologize, Jerry, okay, that's what I'm saying.
He doesn't make it Madam Mayor. Keep out of order and all you have to do is call him out of order.
And, and that's what.
Apologize, apologize to me, don't take no standing to do that.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the town business, that's between the two.
Stop it.
Council, and that's what I'm doing.
He's guilty, he sticks going, he keeps going, always does, he keeps going.
Citizens, would y'all please?
That's his way of making, what he say, I say, that's his way of making, what he say, I say.
That's, that, I don't, look, that's between you and Councilmember Mars.
I'm allowing him to speak and to.
I'm stopping him.
Okay, 'cause I will respond.
I still haven't got the apology, you don't even know what I said.
I don't wanna hear your apology right now, so if you have one, I'll take it personally. Oh my, oh my, she asked for a report, sir.
Yeah, when she said what she said, I lost my cool and I said your mother. Because that is not who I am and I don't know her mother and I shouldn't have brought her into our conversation. So Ms. Waiters, I apologize.
Okay, all right, went on and finished, okay, went on and finished.
Yes.
Just went on and finished.
All right, we're gonna, we have to get away from, first of all, for everybody, well, a lot of these reports went downhill as time progressed. I'm not gonna even make any more comments on them, I'm gonna just go to the lines and then I'm gonna go to the people here if they have something to say and then I'm gonna call for a German, because it really, I don't think, it's no sense to me keep on just dragging this dead horse, and that's exactly what it is. Exactly, so I'm gonna go to the lines first. Is there anyone on the line with a comment? All right, would you turn your, you need to mute your, your sound, Nancy, I'm getting a lot of feedback from you, you probably gonna have to. Okay, okay. You can go and say something, I keep hearing the feedback from it, okay. Yeah. If, if Nancy, if you, if you turn your TV down, I think we can hear you and it's gonna be audible. Turn your TV down. Turn your TV down. Well, we can still hear it lightly, okay, if you just go on and say what you have to say, I think that would solve it.
Now, I got a couple of things to say real fast. When they give their report, they got their lights behind. The other thing is, that is for a given report, not on your back and forth. And that was uh, one of the things, but the really real I call about, uh, when you say get permit, the bill, they have to go to P, uh, the pre-student county because they are a district. And everybody, for any mission, what you, if you wanna pass anything in town, you have to go before your district. And I just, you know, I just just came uh, aware because of the, of my pictures house. The other thing is, the town association, uh, uh, do they have association still going on? Because they, regardless of this being, and of course, this town is gonna have association, they had one because I had something else I was going to give. Now, the other thing is, uh, read these papers. Uh, I did it twice a week now for some reason, or what's it? Uh, and then I see, uh, uh, these persons have a, what they did a different area. Now, we used to have that, the late Miss Brooks did do it for this town. Do we just find out, do we have to pay to have a, uh, what's the word, I'm gonna say, that we say?
To have a posting, yeah, to have a notice?
Yeah, but do we have to, okay, like, brand one guy, just somebody from brand one. I looked down with that, uh, brand that, uh, 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 you know, so, uh, Miss Brooks used to be an employee now, they, they make this book. My question is, I know all that stuff you have on today, tonight, it should have been posted in the paper. I've just seen, uh, the car he talks to talking about, everything, everything. I tell the media thing about Fairmont Heights. It, uh, at the time, you know, hell, at the time, we did it in, should have seen, find out, or you got to touch my if you have to pay for that or do it something like your brother. And first and then we got your orders to say, you gotta post it, you have to pay for that. Find out if you need to, uh, uh, be for that, have it written or not. Because I know every paper, I have looked, uh, behind stuff, it's there, that you can give good information out, and that's what I'm saying. Now, as far as these green books, they not call the green books no more, they call something else. And you're gonna need to find out, because it's like, I know that you know what you're talking about, people just tell people, so it gets tough and it's thinking about this. The other thing is that, if, if not the Levine, it's the Remoria Park, we went and, uh, on the federal government for all the people in there and all of them, and that, they wanted them some kind of policy member to be in town and down there on street, because I think it's, it's the Remoria Park, because you can get money for that, you know, just saying. If not the Levine, and I, when I saw that, I just thought the whole that's awesome, I was really struggling. The other thing is just the main thing I, I, I want to say, don't y'all have a power of attorney?
No, we don't, Nancy.
Like I said, just the minutes I saw, the, uh, function back and forth, and you can't, I couldn't hear nothing, I didn't hear, I didn't want to talk, if you could hear. And you need to bring your, uh, phone, close it on. The other thing, I'm trying to get all week on your home, because God, you know, no member put in anything that you want from the white, I feel that money, because each other, we land in corners, and all the shit around us, but then say. And, and I think if you want to upraise the, uh, preventable seller, if you got somebody, you need to put a grant in there. So you will miss out on that one, and something else you said was of the street, and the street, uh, uh, done. Now, those, uh, you gotta have that, it's no capital.
Right.
And I'm saying it because I, you know, they, they wouldn't try my height, and they said, but, but it's gotta be in there, you know, get somebody to put a grant what you're talking about, if they're gonna be upgraded, you know, and you need to and if you need to get, uh, some raises or whatever, and how about the, uh, if you need to do your, uh, police, whatever, you know, I have that all this stuff is gonna be in, it should be in by this month. And you all have to add this, so that's something from you. Because they're doing our work here with our downtown, uh, 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 because we got a new man in the outer town, down the road, and I'm working with him. And, uh, they, they, they almost keep the same thing you do to roads and deposits and all that. Uh, you know, it all, I would have a new man, and, uh, we've been working with him, we just started a reservation, uh, John Peter, huh? And that is, uh, we've been working with him to get him, uh, that in the most of things, we come across, I think, oh, the same thing we need up in downtown. So if you can get a list, or get somebody to, uh, come and get the list, would you really need? Then, uh, we can come up with something, that being about into this like yesterday.
Okay.
That was, uh, I've been talking to him about that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
They wanted to what, what, the, what, what is that, uh, you know, Fairmont Heights, I had a list.
Uh huh.
But, uh, I'm gonna, give me something if you want, and they, we have to get somebody.
And we need to give somebody else some opportunity.
And get a grant before they're gonna get me out. If you're gonna be right, man, buddy, they should.
I know. Okay, all, all right, okay Nancy, well, you know, I'm, I'm already taking that under advisement, you know, you always, like you said, you talk to me about that, almost every day. So, okay, so what I would do is, we have some things that have been highlighted and it's been said loud, loud and clear tonight about the real need for those. and it's been said loud, loud and clear tonight about the real need for those speed bumps and for this, this building. Yes, it's, it's just a major need. So, we realize that trying to move forward as fast as possible and I wanna thank you for your input. Thank you. Well, okay. Well, okay, well, whatever that new name is for them, it's the same general concept. And we have to. Okay, all right.
Call this paper and find out, you know, you do that offer from like the different area. Find out if you have to pay, you get a pay in there, or you just have to stop it.
Yeah, that's the Prince George Post. We're gonna review that too and Ms. Tucker, probably tomorrow, by the time I get in, we'll try to contact them and find out what their requirements are as far as posting notices. Prince George Post, cuz you don't really see them like you used to because of the pandemic. Yeah. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Uh, is there anyone else on the line that wanted to make a comment? Because we're about to close out. All right, uh, let me see. Who else? Uh, Ms. Clark and, was one more person, they gone?
There's one left, huh?
Okay, all right.
Um, I'd like to personally thank Councilmember Morgan as the Public Works Chair because there were some bags of, of grass in front of my house that the Public Works did not pick up on a Thursday and it swung into the following week. Because she gave her phone number at the town meeting, I was able to call her at home and she, there was a twenty-four hour turnover and the job was taken care of.
Okay.
Also, when my neighbor's tree fell into the alley, she made sure that the Public Works cleaned up all the branches to keep the alley clear. And finally, because there's no ventilation in this room and prior to everyone leaving, all of the citizens was crammed over here. Can the council move back over to the other side of the room and leave this side for citizens? So that we can have some distance between these chairs?
Okay, but see, what happens is with him recording, we're not gonna be able to get everybody in real tight. I really wanted us to go downstairs because we could stretch it out, but the Wi-Fi is not functioning good. We use this. If we could use this, use the cellphone and get people on the line, and then we could, we could go downstairs. I don't know how effective that cellphone usage has been because when we used it, some of the other times, people would say, oh, I can't hear. And at one time, we were putting the microphone up to the cellphone and if they can hear on the cellphone, we can move it downstairs sometimes. That way, the citizens have one end, the mayor and the council have another. We can get our recording done. You can do everything. But if we close this all off, that, that's gonna mean that everybody, it's gonna be, councilmembers are gonna be real close. He's not gonna be able to record and it's gonna be a, it's gonna be bunched in. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. Uh, I'll investigate about the lower level. If so, we could possibly, I'm not gonna say for sure.
There's ventilation, I see.
Yeah, I, I wonder what we could, we need some ventilation, but then again, we need a lot. This, this whole area, it needs to be renovated, so I don't know what kind of system we could put in that would create some, in a way, but it might be too cool cuz you know, we got a door here, we have a door in the next room, but you don't wanna just open the door and let little, little pests start coming in. So, I don't know what else we could do. You know, we'll try to see, come up with some solution. It would be good to do something because it is, it gets tight, especially over periods, everybody breathing and talking. Yeah. So, we'll see what we can do. Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am?
What would help is if we get a circulating fan, a round fan that blows up.
Yeah.
It'll clear the air cuz it's stifling in here.
Well, we can, we can do that. I think we have, um, well, we have a lot of fans.
Not the box.
But the tall ones.
No, it's a round one. It's not a velocity fan. You can get them at Walmart anywhere by patron. Captain, it leans back and when it lean back and blow up, you can put, I mean, you even see them at Restaurant Depot.
Okay.
Costco.
Okay.
And by now, they're going on sale, but it will ventilate. It'll make air just keep circulating.
We can get that. That's not a problem. And that would help some of the air to circulate. Okay. I'll put that on the list for Public Works when they go. They can go on and pick one. He'll probably be able to get it at, at Home Depot. Cuz, oh, it's not there?
I'll look.
Yeah.
Spending crazy money and don't make sense. You can get them on sale later.
Okay. All right. See what, see what you can find out. That would be something good. Okay, uh, at this time, I think we've really, we've covered the gamut of, of the things that we need to cover for this evening. And, um, from the responses, you all, your responses need to, make sure, you need to make sure they get to Mr. Harris. He was supposed to have been here tonight.
That's what he told me.
Okay, and then he called Ms. Tucker and said he was feeling ill. So, it probably would behoove you to give it, put it in her hands since she is the town clerk and let her take the responses and then possibly he could come tomorrow and pick those up. And then we can take it from there. Yes.
I'm wondering, from where we are right now with all the time that we have wasted, as always, bickering, are we gonna ever, we were told, and I know since I started in two thousand five, the charter is what we abide by, this and this alone, not our personal opinions or anything else. It applies to me as well as all seven of us sitting here. Now, either we're gonna apply by this charter or we oughta have a charter burning.
Right.
Because it's clearly written and, I mean, I don't wanna reiterate or be repetitive, but you know yourself from your recall, you had to abide wholeheartedly by this. The attorney had told us too many times, if anything were to happen to any one of us, that it didn't, uh, affect us as a councilperson defending the citizens in the community. You have to adhere to your own legal counsel. Okay, so with what we've, we've wasted a good amount of time, like, doing a bunch of nothing when it's here. We all got this. This is it, whether it's revised, whatever, how old, this is what we go by. Tom Reynolds said it. MML says it. We go to Ocean City and hear the same thing. It's time to adhere to the charter.
Right. Okay. And so, in saying that, we've realized now from the responses that we received tonight is that we're gonna have to schedule the special election. Now, I think that's, I think, I think, no, now, okay, okay.
They had five days, Madam.
Yeah, okay, they had that. They had the five days. Yes, I read that. I read that.
To, to, to the, five days.
Yeah.
Five days.
Turn a light on in your damn.
But no, well, it didn't come to us. It's supposed to go to the Board of Elections now. If Mr., had, did you all contact Mr. Harris?
Um, my, I. Can we, is this a part of the meeting or are we?
Yeah, I mean, it's part, I want to finalize this before we leave out.
Before the, before we adjourn with the public.
Yeah.
Read the charter. Just let everybody read the charter cuz we can go back and forth with this all night. It says five days.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm asking, if there's error, was it reported on yesterday to Mr. Harris? The Board of Elections is responsible for the whole process. Okay. If, if he received notice, I don't know whether he received it by phone call or by whatever, but the Chair or the Clerk, if they received the notice within the five days that they wanted to maintain, according to what I saw, now, I need to go back and review if there's anything else that I missed.
Notify the, them? Or did it say notify the council?
Right. That, that's, that's what, that's what needs to be verified. Okay, okay. So, so, okay.
They only do the certification.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I read, but I read cuz, because the question was asked last week. That's why I bought it and I made a suggestion also. Shouldn't be the only time we argue with, about the charter for day, meeting, at the meeting, at the meeting, I had to bring the charter for the self-saying reason. We should be familiar enough with the charter and like I keep saying, we've already done this. And some people that act like they don't understand read the charter when it was happening to you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know some people did.
Same process. It's the same process.
But you know, a lot of times, like I said, well, let's just, let's just get this organized. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna go on for now and I'm just gonna close this meeting out. I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm gonna motion for adjournment.
And then we will take it from there.
Second.
But you're saying with, what is gonna be done and followed from.
Adjourn, adjourn.
Okay. We have the fir, we have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's somebody's telephone that's going.
I second.
Wait a minute. That's somebody's phone or somebody's, uh, TV. Okay. All in favor of adjournment? We're about to adjourn and then we, we had something else. Did you? Did you get it, Ms. Tucker?
Yes, I have the motion and a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Are we staying adjourned at nine thirty-three?
You all officially closed. I just wanna ask if, at some point in time, if you all could agree to a time?